Okay, we're gonna get going. Is he all set in the back? All set, all right. Good evening, welcome to the November 27, 2018 zoning board of adjustment meeting. To my left is Mr. Carter-Fock, he's the deputy planning manager for the city of Nashua. Across the way, I have Mr. Steve Lionel, Mr. Robert Shaw, Mrs. Stoffy Boras, and Ms. Mary Ann McKay, and I am J.P. Boucher. This meeting is written, as I recorded, by written transcript and is also video-recorded. Please direct all testimony to the microphone, and we ask only one person speak at a time. Mr. Jack Carrion is joining us, he's our vice chair. If you don't already have a copy of tonight's agenda, you'll find it on the back, the table in the back of the auditorium. Tonight, we'll be hearing only requests for variances, and I'll go over that. We don't have any special exceptions, so I will not go over the criteria for that. So a variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that an ordinance does not permit. The five criteria that needs to be established for approval of a variance are: one, the variance will not be contrary to public interest; two, the spirit of the audience is observed; three, substantial justice is done; four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished; and five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Per the city of Nashua bylaws, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. Also, this board will hear all scheduled cases as long as a quorum of three voting board members are present at this meeting. We should have a quorum tonight. Any citizen that has the right to contest, any citizen has a right to contest a decision this board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received through Mr. Fock and the city and Nashua planning department within thirty days from the day after a decision was made. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the Hampshire Superior Court, and you can contact Mr. Fock for more information. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts. The first part is the public hearing. This is where the applicant and citizens address this board and speak to the merits of the case. The order of testimony is as follows. One, the applicant will have fifteen minutes to present their case, then those in favor will have a limit of five minutes each to testify, then those in opposition or with questions will have a limit of five minutes each to testify. Then the applicant has five minutes to come back and speak in rebuttal, and then finally, a representative and only one person of those in opposition or with questions will have five minutes to speak in rebuttal. We'll ask that you direct all testimony to this board and not the audience. If you have any questions about an application, they are to be directed to the board, and we'll get them answered for you. The second part of tonight's meeting is called a public meeting. This is where the board debates the merits of each case amongst ourselves. Please note that during the public meeting, so once the public hearing is closed, public meeting is open, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. We ask that you silence your cellphones, and if you need to have a conversation, we'd ask you to step out into the hall. Mr. Fock, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay. Tonight, we have five full-time voting members here, and we have Mrs. Stoffy Boras as the alternate. She will participate in any case, in all cases that we feel that we are going to participate, will participate in all cases. Ms. Boras will participate in all those cases, will participate in the public meeting and the public hearing portions of the case, but she will not vote unless one of us recuses ourselves from the case. With that, I will call case number one, I'll read that in. First case is 267 Main Street Realty LLC owner, 267 Main Street, Sheet 97, Lot 13, requesting the following: a use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-1-15, Table 15-1, Number 113, to allow a restaurant with a drive-through facility; two, a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to exceed maximum front yard setback from Main Street, ten feet maximum allowed, thirteen feet proposed; and three, variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to exceed maximum front yard setback from Prospect Avenue, ten feet maximum allowed, thirty-eight feet proposed. It's in a D1 M U zone, Ward 4, and this was table from the October 23, 2018 meeting. So I'm going to reopen the public hearing, and we'll move on with that, and so we'll take more testimony from the applicant and anybody else who'd like to add more testimony. And again, everything that was discussed and said in the October 23, 2018 is part of the record, so just so everybody knows that that is there. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Prohlman. I am an attorney with Purney and Prohlman at 20 Trafalgar Square in Nashua here, on behalf of your applicant, 267 Main Street Limited Liability Company. With me tonight, as you met last time, are Joe and Rick Carvallo, the father-son team who operated a number of Dunkin' Donuts in town, Chad Brandon from Fieldstone Land Consultants is with me here as well, both answering any questions for the board. Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to do our whole presentation again. You heard plenty from us last time, but I am going to do a brief recap and then talk about the renderings that you asked us to prepare for this, for this hearing. We, again, we introduced you Joe and Rick Carvallo, they own the Canal Street, the Simeno Plaza, the East Hall Street Dunkin' Donuts, they're local, hands-on franchisees, second and third generation Dunkin' Donut operators, and you heard Joe Carvallo tell you how critical the drive-through component of Dunkin's are today. The Canal Street, the Simeno Plaza site are struggling, the East Hall Street is doing, is doing fine, not unlike the new Dunkin' on Broad Street, and the drive-through is a critical component to these restaurants today. You heard from Rick Carvallo talk about how he manages the drive-through, how he has drive from the, from the reader board to the window, he has it under ninety seconds turn of our time, so the stacking that we have on-site, the thirteen cars of stacking is ample. You heard from Giles Hamm, if you remember, from Vanessa and Associates, the traffic consultant, he was confident that due to the capacity at Main Street at this site, the level of service on all traffic movements at this signalized intersection will remain a level of service B as it is today, and post-build if the Dunkin' Donut is brought, brought to fruition. We talked about the site, we talked about removing curb cuts, we talked about realigning the pedestrian walkway across Main Street, we talked about making this as pedestrian-friendly as possible, putting the parking in the back, two stories, like the Main Street master plan calls for, so we have, we are very mindful of the various requirements of the Main Street master plan, after having met with staff a number of times to bring this plan to you. Vanessa and Associates, they did a queue study, they took a look at, they've worked on a number of Dunkin' Donuts, in particular, they took a look at the Broad Street queue line, the stacking line, and you'll remember Giles said that at maximum, they had thirteen cars in the queue lane more often than not, it was much, far fewer cars, six or seven cars. We have a stacking lane that well, far exceeds the city standards, we're over a hundred feet, we can stack thirteen cars, maybe we'll hit it at peak rush hour, but typically, the traffic flow will work according to the, to the traffic reports. Chad Brandon is, again, is here. He told us last time, he would tell you again, that we've looked at every possible tweak and alignment and location of the building and everything we can do, and what we're presenting to you, or we're confident is the best possible layout and use of the site that we, that we can use on this, on this relatively small site, again, with the, with the lights at Main Street. We went through the variance criteria last time, we have three variance requests, two setback, and one for the drive-through. Not to put words of feeling into the boards, but I think it's fair to say the board, the board was comfortable with the setback issues, but really focused on the drive-through and the, and the look and the feel of what, of what we're presenting. The Carvallos do plan to spend, you know, ballpark, you know, 1.5 million dollars, all in on the site from acquisition to build out, and you folks know the site well, you drive by it every day, it's a dead dormant site, it's for decades since the old Gibbs, Gibbs gas station shut down, and we're hoping to bring it back to life. The board was on the proverbial fence, if I may say, about the look and design of what we're presenting. What we presented last time were just simple renderings of the Dunkin' Donuts site, and you asked us to give us a better feel, a better sense, and so we sent it back to the architect, and you can see what she has prepared. And the middle prints that we have up on the board show the rendering that we are recommending and that we are suggesting would be the best look for the site. And you can see what we're presenting is a short brick or stone wall, roughly a foot, maybe a foot and a half, wrought iron fencing from there, and then with posts roughly every eight feet or so. Those posts are about seven feet high, the top of the wrought iron fence is six feet high. There will be some landscaping built right into that, and I'll, I'll tell you honestly, not a lot of landscaping, there's just not a lot of room right in there, but there will, what the architect left out is some green that will be added as the site gets built out. And you can see, we have some different angles, and I would suggest to you that if you can picture yourself in a car heading south on Main Street, what you're really going to see is not so much the wrought iron fence, but you'll see a series of posts, so it'll have that look as if it's a full wall, and similarly, maybe less so coming, coming northbound on Main Street. The angle that we have is kind of from the opposite sidewalk looking south and looking north. The archway was, is thereby designed intending to capture a pedestrian feel, try to make it as inviting as possible, and, and you can see that we also, working with staff, we spent a lot of time on this thing, we considered other options, and the board mentioned, you know, what else is out there. And so you can see on the, on my upper right, the plans showing closest to Ms. Boris, we have other options that we looked at, being a solid stone, solid wall, be it a solid brick wall, a solid stucco wall, and you can picture any, any number of substances, and then you could have a solid rock wall of some sort. And we didn't like those for a number of reasons. Aesthetically, aesthetically, they, we just knocked them out because we didn't think they looked, they looked good. They also present graffiti problems, they also present a little bit of a security problem because we expect, you know, you could have people hiding behind that wall, out of sight from cruisers driving up and down Main Street. So we didn't like those options, we're not eliminating them, if the board is interested in those solid wall options, you know, we wouldn't exclude those. We believe, however, the wrought iron fence has the most appeal, it's similar to the fence across the street at the hospital, it's similar to the fence that Dunkin' Donuts has on Canal Street, we think, we think it makes the most sense for the site. We are mindful of the master plan in this area, which is why we tried to make the best of both worlds. The drive-through is critical for the Dunkin's, but we, we are trying to move the building as close as possible to Main Street, as a ten-foot maximum setback, and we have, and just to clarify, working with Chad, we can bring that building to thirteen feet off the sidewalk. The plan shows fourteen feet, but there's a little bit of wiggle room in there, so we're proposing, and actually, the notice went out, that the building would be thirteen feet off of the edge of the right-of-way to the, to the edge of the building, right? And, and again, this design is intended to maximize the master plan as best we can with the two stories that the master plan calls for, parking in the rear, pedestrian-friendly, and we're trying to make the, make the most of this site with respect to the drive-through and the master plan for this Main Street area. And I, and I think that's, I think that's what the board had called for, for some better rendering, some better design, get a better feel for what you're, what you would be considering. And again, I don't want the board to lose sight of, you know, we have a dead and dormant site that, you know, we hope to improve and eliminate the old Gibbs gas station and bring something new to Main Street. I think, anything else? I think, unless the board had questions for us, I think that's, we tried to do what you, what you asked us to do.
Mr. Lionel. You did very much what I think we were looking for, and I definitely appreciate this. I have one, may or may not be relevant, irrelevant question, may just be an error on the part of the architect who did the drawing, I'm looking at the, the traffic signal which she has, out of place, I think, I mean, it-
No, I think you're right.
Looking at, at the conceptual site plan, that it's actually at the corner where she has it on, you know, well past the crosswalk, so that's just perhaps an artist error, right?
And I think there's even more to that, just not to, not to pick on someone who's not here, there's also a shorter kind of standalone pile-on signal that just faces Prospect Street, that's not shown, it's shown on the, on the site plan, but it's not shown on that, but, but you're right. You know, we don't have everything showing on this architectural, on the architectural elevation, but I think you get the gist of what we're trying to do.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that something wasn't being moved, or, because that didn't make sense. That's all.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you again. Before I sit down, anything?
Does anybody else like to speak in favor of this application?
Do I say that? I think we're good, thank you.
All right. So no, no one else in favor of the application?
I'll say one thing.
Yeah, just, you can address, please.
Absolutely. Rick Carvallo, 15 Grapevine Road, Merrimack, one of the franchise owners. The one thing I will say is, when we're looking at the site, and I know we talk so much about the site, I know it's been brought in front of you guys four or five different times by, you know, different users, one of the great things about this site being used and developed is the number of people that come in to use the hospital, who leave the city of Nashua and think, oh, what a crummy little place, I was waiting at that stoplight, and, you know, that's what I saw, and, you know, the, the surrounding towns and the number of ambulances I saw today from Brookline and Amherst and Hollis, who bring their, their patients in here, families who come visit, and I see them at the Dunkin' Donuts, and they're visiting downtown, and the lasting impression that they leave with. So instead of having the current situation, having something that looks like, you know, a high-end office building and, and such a great investment in our downtown will benefit all of us, you know, and, and as much as obviously we want it to go through because of us, we want it to go through because the city of Nashua deserves something to be there that, that will, you know, create a better downtown for us, so that is all I have to say.
Any questions? No, okay, thank you very much.
If I may, just real quick, Rick reminded me, I forgot one last point on my, on my notes. We do expect a lot of increased pedestrian traffic, in addition to the drive-through. We do expect a lot of pedestrian traffic because you, you're going to have a Dunkin' Donuts across from a hospital, with residential in the back, and apartments right next door, and, you know, bottled gas around the corner, and all, all the various shops right, right in this area, this little micro neighborhood, we do expect a lot of pedestrian traffic to be using the sidewalks, the crosswalks, and we think, again, it'd be a benefit to, for this site, but thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Okay, seeing none?
We're done, thank you.
There is, there is no rebuttal, period, so I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. I think, this is for myself, I think this rendering and this has gone a long way because now you can picture kind of how the site is working. Again, I think now that I see the solid walls and, you know, not only for security issues, but it really wouldn't look good, it would look choppy, I think that this wrought iron fence with those posts, the way that they have that, including that pedestrian arch in there, I think that that goes a long way to making this site, for me, work for that and being able to, you know, look at that as a drive-through and, but really kind of blending that in and really making it look, look and feel like it works, it's going to work, and, and so that's kind of my gut feelings right now. I think that aesthetically, I think that it'll fit in with the Main Street portion of, of that, that area, so that's my opinion right now. Mr. Carrion.
Yeah, I'm appreciative of this rendering, because, you know, I was one of those on the fence, feeling like we were deviating too much from the master plan, you know, when we think about thirteen feet and the other is thirty-eight feet, you know, but this is a corner lot, and the thirty-eight feet, you know, is from Prospect, and that, I don't think really comes to bear to play here, so to me, it's more of the thirteen feet versus ten feet, and we're, we're three feet out of that range, which, which I don't see as, you know, that huge of an incursion, and when I look at these renderings, I, I think it looks reasonably decent, I don't, it doesn't look like a big deviation from the downtown master plan. I'm still sensitive to some of, you know, the abutters that had concerns about the traffic, but I feel with these owners and the testimony about how they, you know, want that traffic to go through, I, I'm putting faith in that testimony that it's not going to be backing up and causing a problem, especially for the abutting service station. And I, I do feel that if this were built out like this, it would be an improvement to this overall neighborhood, which is a little bit rundown right now, not just this property, but some, a little bit more towards, you know, Hollis Street or Kinsey Street, and hopefully, this could be a catalyst to reverse that. I also wanted to say, I appreciate, on the rendering, it's really, to me, like a worst-case rendering, you know, the, the queue is full of cars, we have, you know, a red car, a white car, a pickup truck, it's not like there's one Mini Cooper convertible at the window and that's it, you know, so it's, it's kind of like the worst, worst you'll see, and, and yeah, it is a, a drive-through with a masking in front of it, but I, I think it's, I'm more enthusiastic about the proposed wall with the fence, you know, post with fence, if we want to call it that, so overall, I'm, I'm supportive of it, but, you know, I'm open, you know, I certainly want to hear other opinions on the board.
Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great job, really, with the fence, I think it's a, it really fits well, I think it's, it kind of, I think it accomplishes a lot, I mean, it creates that kind of offset, I think it helps mask the cars, I think it's just very well-done from an aesthetics perspective. I like the arch from the even, you know, I guess maybe I didn't know why I liked it until it was pointed out by Attorney Prohlman, that it kind of, it's part of that pedestrian kind of draw or feel, and I guess that's, that's, I think it's accomplishing that, I guess I didn't recognize why it felt, you know, kind of positive to me, but I think, yeah, and in some ways, as Mr. Carrion was talking, I think some of that thirteen feet now that we're talking about, well, probably three feet of that is probably mostly that wall footprint that's occupying part of that thirteen feet, but I'd way, way rather see something like that there than just have a stacking lane that's right up against the sidewalk with some narrow fence or something like that, so, no, I think this is, you know, I think it's a very good effort, and, and I hope that they're able to achieve their intent to stay under that ninety-second, just speaking from experience, when you get in those, you know, those experiences where you are dealing with a two or three-plus-minute type of wait at a, at a drive-through like this, it's frustrating, so, and it just kind of builds, so that's great if they can kind of keep that as part of the whole business and intent, because I think that'll kind of be good for everybody, it'd be good for the customers, good for the business, good for traffic and the neighbors, so.
Mr. Lionel.
I'm also appreciative of, of these drawings that help, helped me visualize what it would really look like. The, when we, before we were hearing about a wrought iron fence, I didn't envision this combination with the low, the low stone wall and the fence, I think that looks very nice and also serves to mask the oncoming cars that are waiting in, in the line, especially after dark with the headlights, so at this point, I am in support of the application.
Thank you. Ms. McKay, or Ms. Boris, any, any comments, you don't have to.
I just wanted to turn on my mic. I leave it off because I wrestle a lot of papers. I like the look, the aesthetics of this, I like the style, I like that when you look around the corner, you see glass, which gives the eye, not a wall, but you can look through, so visually, it's much more appealing, and like everyone else, I really like the arch, it is welcoming. I'm very much in support of this.
Thank you. Ms. Boris?
Well, I concur with all of my colleagues, and I'm very much in support as well, I think they did a great job with the footprint that they have to work with.
All right, thank you. So it sounds like we're all in agreement, I believe? Would anybody like to make a motion? Mr. Carrion.
Maybe I'll make a motion for the use variance first, and then take the areas together.
Okay, so, he's going to take the use variance first?
We're going to do number, okay.
Use variance, number one first, and then the, then the other two are-
You're gonna-
Yeah, he's going to-
So you're gonna, you're gonna combine them, okay.
I guess it's use variance first.
Thanks.
All right, again, I'm making a, a motion here to approve the use variance, and again, the use variance is to allow a restaurant with a drive-through facility. Again, the owner's 267 Main Street Realty LLC, same address, and I believe this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Well, the special condition is it's in the center of the downtown area, a fairly congested area, no doubt, and on the corner of Prospect Street, but the board has received a lot of data about how a restaurant of this type essentially needs to have a drive-through to be successful. I think the board is also persuaded that this light, this site has long been dormant and underutilized, and therefore, I think the board finds it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance to allow a restaurant with a drive-through facility. I think the board is, believes the testimony that after this restaurant is built out, it'll, it'll positively affect the values of surrounding parcels. I think the board finds it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice is served, and also like to note in the motion that the architecture of the fence in front, the board thinks brings the, the proposal more in line with the downtown master plan, so I make a motion to approve the use variance as proposed.
Seconded by Mr. Lionel, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's five to nothing.
And I'll keep on moving with two area variants?
You want something, Ms. McKay?
One second.
Let's just take a thirty-second break.
The two area variances together?
Yep, I'll, I'll, we'll take those together, I think it's safe to do that.
Okay, sorry.
So number two and number three are going to come together here in this motion?
Okay.
So number two and number three.
So I'll be, I'm making a motion for two area variances. The first is to exceed the maximum front yard setback from Main Street, ten feet maximum is allowed, thirteen feet is proposed, and the second area variance is, again, over the ten-foot maximum- and thirty-eight feet back from Prospect Avenue to allow for their drive-through and parking. I think, given the overall style of this plan with the shading fence in front, it's within the spirit and the intent of the ordinance. Again, I think the board finds that if this property is built out and as opposed to its current state, it'll, it'll definitely increase the property values of surrounding parcels. And I think the board finds that these two area variances are not contrary to public interest and substantial justice to the landowners served. So I make a motion to approve both as presented.
Is there a second? Mr. Shaw? Any discussion? All those in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, your motion passes and.
Thank you all very much.
Just be aware of that thirty-day window of appeal. We'll just take a couple of minute break for Ms. McKay to catch up.
This was a lot. Well, I like to make sure I get some of it.
I can go ahead.
Yeah. Carter, if you can't read, go on all the way down.
Hold that for Evan.
Just call me.
Thanks all. Take care.
Good luck with the project.
Okay. Should we say it or not?
No, I'll say it. You want me to say it?
Boris.
Boris.
People at the church say, when you tell that, I don't mean it's not.
I'm sorry. for the rest of the evening. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Okay, I'd like to open case number two, which is owner Jeffrey Smith, address is seventy-five Hills Ferry Road. The description is Jeffrey E. Smith, trustee of the Jeffrey E. Smith Revocable Trust, owner, seventy-five Hills Ferry Road, Sheet 56 Lot 11, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3. One, for a minimum lot area of seventy-five hundred square feet required, six thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight square feet proposed. And two, for a minimum lot width of seventy-five feet required, sixty-seven point one-six feet proposed. Both requests to subdivide one lot into two lots and it's an RA zone.
My name is Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer with Weiner and Bennett, 111 Concord Street in Nashua. I represent Jeff Smith. Mr. Smith is with me here tonight as well. I just handed out and put up on the two pin boards, I handed out to each of you, eleven by seventeen version of the proposed subdivision plan prepared by Maynard and Paquette for Mr. Smith. It was also attached to the variance application, so you already have that plan, but just in case everyone didn't have it with me, with you, I handed it out. I also gave you an extract from the city's GIS map, which I'll talk about in a little more detail as I get going a few minutes into the application. And on the pin board, I put up just large-scale copies of the same Maynard and Paquette proposed subdivision plan. We prepared, we commissioned Maynard and Paquette to do that plan just because we wanted to be extremely precise on the proposed lot configuration here. We wanted to know exact measurements, literally to the hundredth of a foot, like full-blown survey work would do. That's why you see such a detailed plan for what is relatively, not an uncomplicated application. So the subject property is at seventy-five Hills Ferry Road in the RA District, just off Concord Street in the north end. The property currently is about sixteen thousand eighty-two square feet, so almost point-three-seven acres. It's a corner lot because it's now on the corner of Smithfield Terrace and Hills Ferry Road. It's a flat site without wetlands. And Mr. Smith's goal is to subdivide the property into two lots. Lot A, which would be, is now would be a vacant lot, but intended to accommodate a small, modest, single-family dwelling. And Lot B, which would encompass the existing property, the existing house. I'm going to give you a little history and background on the property, too. You'll notice on the plan that there's a garage, which was built somewhere in the order, I want to say about fifteen years ago, and a small shed. The shed's going to be raised, taken away. Lot A is what generates the need for the variance, that is, the vacant lot, which we hope to house a single-family home. It meets most of the dimensional requirements under the Land Use Code, but it doesn't meet two of them. It has adequate frontage, it's got over sixty feet, it's just over sixty-seven feet of frontage. The house proposed can meet all setback requirements, but it doesn't meet the lot width requirement of seventy-five feet in the RA zone, nor does it meet the minimum area requirement of seven thousand five hundred square feet. Lot A, as proposed, would have approximately sixty-seven hundred fifty-eight square feet, so around seven hundred and forty or so square feet under the minimum, and about seven to eight feet under the minimum lot width requirement. Lot B, if we're fortunate enough to be successful and then, of course, processed through the planning board, would have about ninety-three hundred and twenty-five square feet. So Lot A, Lot B, which would house the existing dwelling, would be more than adequate lot area-wise and has sufficient frontage, more than sufficient because of it being a corner lot, and its setback requirements with the current configuration are met once the shed is taken away. Of course, the board's well aware there are five criteria necessary for an applicant to satisfy to grant a variance. The first criteria is that the variance wouldn't be contrary to the public interest. And we would respectfully submit it's not contrary to the public interest to permit the subdivision of this property into these two lots, when Lot A, our proposed lot to house the new home, would meet nearly all the dimensional requirements. As you can see from the GIS extract that I handed out, we'll take a few moments just to look at that. You can see that there are a number of relatively small, modest-sized lots in that general area of Hills Ferry Road. In pink, I outlined the entirety of seventy-five Hills Ferry Road, the subject property pre-subdivision. And then I simply hand delineated a line that shows the approximate layout of Lot A and Lot B. And you can see Lot B would be the one that has the existing home. And when you eyeball it, just a very simple approach to start, you can get the sense that Lot A is not markedly different from a number of other lots in the immediate area, especially the lots that run along Hills Ferry Road as you head to the west. They're very similar in size to Lot A, generally speaking. You also notice, of course, that the property pre-subdivision is larger than all the other lots on its block. And that's because of history. The house, when Mr. Smith first bought his house, over, I want to say over thirty years ago, it was a seventy-five foot by hundred-and-twenty-five foot lot, seventy-five feet of frontage on Hills Ferry Road and a hundred-and-twenty-five feet of depth. And of course, Smithfield Terrace didn't exist at that time. So you can sort of envision it essentially straddled both sides of his house. About like this. And it went a little deeper. It's about a hundred-and-one feet deep now, it went about a hundred-and-twenty-five feet deep initially. So Smithfield Terrace gets developed, again, around fifteen years or so ago, I think, originally laid out. And lot line adjustments occurred, a couple of them did, affecting Mr. Smith's property, which, of course, he was party to, wasn't contrary to his wishes. The lot line adjustments added land in two manner. A strip of land along what became, along Smithfield Terrace, creating the corner lot, and about a sixty-six foot strip of parcel of land, almost exactly, not quite, but almost exactly what would be proposed Lot A. So originally, Mr. Smith's lot was about eighty-four hundred and twenty-five square feet. It's now almost double that, sixteen thousand oh eighty-two. I think the point being that this isn't the case that I know the board has concerns with from time to time. When someone comes in an existing neighborhood and simply wants to subdivide his lot, he's got a little extra land, seeks variances of some sort, hopes that's an adequate result. This is a case where land was added to this property in a couple of locations. The property is now different, bigger than what's typically in this immediate area. It turns into a corner lot when it wasn't originally. Its driveway shifts from Hills Ferry Road to Smithfield Terrace and I think can reasonably accommodate a second home with a driveway on Hills Ferry, Hills Ferry Road, that's on a lot that is not materially or adversely different than those in the immediate area. Again, the, we have sufficient frontage, we can meet all the setback requirements. To me, those have always been a little bit more critical compliance, and there's regulations to comply with. Then the lot width one, which always I thought was a bit of an anomaly because it contemplates a lot width wider than frontage. And when you look at, even in this area of the city, the lots are rectangular in shape. They don't have this sort of bulge or oblong effect to them, but they're typically standard in shape. So I think the spirit of the variance, the spirit of the ordinance is adequately addressed with this proposal, given these particular circumstances. Second, quite, pardon me, the public interest criteria. The second criteria is the spirit of the ordinance. It's similar to the public interest criteria. We're proposing a single-family home on a lot. Obviously, there are permitted uses in the RA zone, so we're use-wise, certainly consistent with what the ordinance contemplates. Again, we have sufficient frontage, meet the required setback regulations, and can build something that's not incompatible with what's in that neighborhood already. The neighborhood exists with a number of new homes, older homes, some even hundred-years-old type range. This fits in well. You may notice, if you'd been out in that direction, that another new home was just built across the street. It sort of shows that same vitality in the area that we would propose, this application would demonstrate. Third criteria is that the variance does substantial justice. Again, the notion here, I think, is that without a frontage variance required nor a setback variance required, but merely relatively modest variances from lot width and lot area in an, in an area of town that I think is consistent with what we're proposing, substantial justice is done. The, the measure of determining substantial justice is whether or not there's harm to the public. If the variance is granted, there wouldn't be any harm to the public, but there would be significant impact on the applicant if it's not granted, because this enlarged lot, a little bigger now, certainly than what the area needs and what was historically present, would be denied some reasonable use of this piece of land that can function adequately for a single-family home. It's interesting to note that if, if the house was just a few feet further east, that is the existing home, no variance would be needed at all, because the proposed subdivision could have sufficient lot width for both properties. We could effectively move the lot line to the east about eight feet. That would give sufficient area and sufficient lot width and frontage, of course, which we already have. And this more than adequate enough land on Lot B to steal from, if you will, for Lot A. But the placement of the house, a hundred-year-or-so-old house, simply precludes that. The alternative would have been to put the lot line all the way to the edge of the house, seek a setback variance from the, for the existing home, create some sort of easement for the yard, but you really have the same result that you would have under this configuration, which we thought was much more straightforward, and put on the table exactly what the board should consider, make its own judgment on, and hopefully agree that the criteria are met. Fourth criteria is that the variance wouldn't add, excuse me, adversely affect the value surrounding properties. I don't think that's the case. Again, a single-family home and a lot that is not materially different than a number of other lots in the immediate area, especially on Hills Ferry Road. And the last criteria is the hardship criteria, the two-prong test. We identify special conditions of the property. I think we've already noted a number of them. I'll try to just summarize them. Again, we started off as a small lot, expanded by way of lot line adjustments because of the creation of Smithfield Terrace development. It's a house that's in the hundred-year-or-so age, placed in its original location, not moving as a result. We have a corner lot created when one didn't exist before. We can create it, we have a driveway now on Smithfield Terrace, therefore, aren't going to create two driveways side by side on Hills Ferry Road. The existing lot is relatively larger than a number of other lots immediately adjacent to it, thus capable of accommodating the second home. And again, it's not the case of merely desiring to subdivide something that historically never changed. So with those conditions in mind, I think the strict application of the ordinance in this case doesn't serve the purposes of the dimensional matrix in a fair and reasonable way. We can meet the dimensional matrix other than these two criteria that I mentioned, lot width and relatively modest difference in lot area size. We wouldn't be contrary to the character of the neighborhood either with this proposal, given, as you can tell from the GIS blow-up, what the character of the neighborhood already Obviously, we have to get to the planning board to process a true subdivision plan, which we'd hope to do. Again, the proposed house Mr. Smith's contemplating, he's got some designs contemplated, but probably something in the order of a two-family home, maybe fifteen hundred square feet or so, that sort of size. His goal is to build it so his daughter can live there. His daughter grew up in the existing home, would love to be back in the neighborhood. That's, that's the family goal. We have, we have letters from four of the immediate abutters. If you take a look at the GIS blowout I gave you, you see little L's next to four of the lots. I'm going to hand those in to Mr. Falk and give copies to all the board members.
I hadn't seen an L on a map and I was wondering what the L is in this letter.
Well, this afternoon, I was trying to figure out what would be the best way to do it and that's all I came up with. It wasn't all that creative, I would admit. The, Mr. Smith talked to six or, five or six or so of his immediate abutters, most of them a couple of times, showed him what he was planning to do, and the sort of no objection letters were the result. So if I may, Mr. Falk, and happy to answer questions.
Yes, you're the best.
I was overthinking and I thought L was less frontage.
Did I conclude your presentation?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Did I conclude your presentation?
Yes, it is. We're happy to answer.
Does that conclude your presentation?
I'm sorry, Mr. Jim.
Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, it is. We're happy to answer any questions, and I appreciate your time and energies.
All right, I have a question on, if I may start.
It's a clarification question. Attorney Westgate, I'm not sure if you misspoke just near the end of your presentation. You said something about a two-family home, and I don't know if you meant a two-bedroom home for the new home.
No, a new home, and I, right, I should, if I...
You don't mean it to be a two, a multi-unit...
Oh, no.
...two-family home.
Correct. A single-family home, likely two stories.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe in the order of 1,500 square feet. That's at least one design.
I think I heard two-family too.
Or two-family, yeah, so that's...
That would be a very...
Didn't think that was the intent.
That would be a faux pas on my part, a bad faux pas.
So that was one of my questions.
Thank you for noticing that and letting me clarify the record.
So I have another question. I just wanted, just to quickly understand, just for myself. You had talked about, sounded like a land swap when Smithfield Terrace came in? So it looked like there was some consideration given for giving up some land that was originally, that is now Smithfield Terrace, to this Lot A. Now, was the ownership of Lot A at that time, or that piece of property, by this prop, by this, by number, by number 75?
No, I can show you pretty quickly what exactly happened.
Okay.
It happened in two steps.
Attorney Westgate, if you could take the mic with you, though.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To make sure you're picked up.
Yeah, absolutely. If you like, I can do it up there even if...
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great.
Maybe a little better.
It might be easier for everybody to...
Sure. So, I think I mentioned that this is about 101 feet deep now. It was about 125 originally. And so, Mr. Smith's original property was about like this, 75 by 125. And then there were two land swaps in the context of the development of Smithfield Terrace. One was this area to sort of square him off to Smithfield Terrace, and the other was what is most of what our proposed Lot A is. So that's what happened. Mr. Smith will probably want to come up and say something if he wanted to clarify that. I'll have him.
I just want to follow up on that, on that question. So, was there ever two separate lots, or was it always one lot after the land swap?
It was always one lot, but what it was, was the, if you can envision this, if you take a look at the GIS map, I can explain that a little perhaps more. Lot A, more or less Lot A, was part of what you'll see with the L and five Smithfield Terrace below it. So, the lion's share of Lot A got cut off from the land which was a component of Smithfield Terrace, including the five Smithfield Terrace present location. So Lot A wasn't a standalone, separate lot unto itself. It was a component of another lot.
Okay. All right, thank you.
It took us a while to figure that out, frankly.
Any other questions for Attorney Westgate? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of the application? Please go on up. You name an address, please.
Jeffrey Smith, 75 Hills Ferry Road in Ashwa. Yeah, it does get confusing. So, that what is Lot A was what was left over after Smithfield Terrace was developed, and it was a separate lot that I bought from the developer. So it wasn't all one thing. So every, every, so Lot, I can...
So, if you can, if you want to grab the mic, in this, come on up. If you feel better, you can describe it up here. Come on up.
Okay.
I'm just trying to understand whether or not it was, when you said it was a separate lot...
No, it is confusing. So, am I in everybody's way? So, this is right. You know, this is what I bought, and this was woods, this was woods, and nothing was here. This was woods. Then, when Smithfield Terrace came in, I gave up this piece right here. I got this in return, and my driveway was rerouted. My driveway used to go up to Hills Ferry Road. This was empty, and they built Smithfield around me. So, this was an empty lot that the developer, Kevin Smith, had left over. I bought it from him. And it was two lots for a while, and now, and then it got merged into one lot, and basically, I'm just trying to put it back to the way it was and give it to my daughter, in a nutshell.
So, I guess that's what I was asking. So when did that merge happen?
About 15 years ago. That garage that he was talking about, that's about 15 years old, is, got put in as part of the deal. So when the driveway came in, Kevin Smith put up that garage when he reinstituted the new driveway to come out on Smithfield here. So this, my house never had a garage before. So, it went up at the same time as the development of all these houses.
All right. So the merge was something that you did, or was that part of, part of everything that happened that automatically happened?
Yeah, it all automatically happened.
So was it something that you went after the facts, said, "I want to merge this"?
No, no, no.
Which is part of the whole land swap?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Smith? Any other questions for Mr. Smith? No? Okay, thank you.
If I may, Mr. Jim, and just to be, just to be absolutely clear, the, again, Lot A, the lion's share of Lot A, was never an independent standalone lot. It was a component of other land that became Smithfield Terrace, or was part of Smithfield Terrace. But there was a consolidation plan by which Mr. Smith bought that essentially the lion's share of Lot A, and it got merged into his property that way. So it wasn't like you would ordinarily think, two boxes of, two, you know, 50-year-old lots on an old plan that get merged like that. It was a component of one that got merged with his.
Thank you. Any other questions for Attorney Westgate? Any other, anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Okay, so I will read, before I go on to any questions of opposition, I'll state that there are four letters of support, and I won't read them all. I'll just, I'll give you the name and address from who the support comes from. The one, first one is from 79 Hills Ferry Road, which is Matthew and Carla Gangnan, Gangnan, 5 Smithfield Terrace, which is Rick and Jenny White, 80 Hills Ferry Road, which is from Stella Bloom, and finally, from 118 Conkers Street, from Raymond G. Presente, trustee. Presente, yeah. All right. With that, there is nobody else in favor of this application like to speak? Anybody like, with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Nobody? Okay. With that, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Shaw.
I think, you know, the fact that, I think one of the things you were getting at, and you probably should elaborate on it more, you know, the whole, it wasn't like a really two lots, one lot, two lots again attempt, but the thing that, to me, that's most compelling really is that there is sufficient area to get two conforming lots if you didn't have the house positioned where it is now. And it's pretty clear, looking at the plot, there's really no way around that without doing something kind of ridiculous. So this gets into the, you know, doesn't pass the kind of sanity test to me to get to a point where we could force it to meet the dimensional requirements of the code to meet, you know, might even be triggered to meet the lot width, but I still think that probably could have been kind of tweaked. But to me, it's, and you know, Attorney Westgate went through that, the fact that the house simply really presents a very significant barrier to being able to make two conforming lots. So, I think that this lot will not be inconsistent with some of the other, especially immediate properties, and I think it's something that's reasonable.
Ms. Lionel. This is my neighborhood, and I would disagree with the, with the description of the immediate neighborhood being narrow lots, especially on the other side of Hills Ferry Road. Most of the houses have 85, 95, 100-foot wide lot widths. On that side of Hills Ferry Road, there are several adjacent that have 75-foot, but, you know, some are 130-foot wide and wider. You know, I'm sensitive to, you know, all of this lot merging and the construction of Smithfield Terrace, but I'm really not comfortable with putting in an undersized lot in that neighborhood, which generally has much larger lots and homes on it.
Thank you. When, and the reason why I was asking about how the lots were and where they were before, because I read a note here, there was a merge that happened, there was some lot relocations in 2003, and just trying to understand the chain of custody on this project. Again, it went to have met the frontage, but if the lot had still been 120 feet deep, it would have met the square footage originally. But again, when Smithfield Terrace came in, and I understand now, you know, what exactly happened, and obviously, you have this home that existed for a while, and it's probably not positioned, like you said, in the right spot, but I think that they may have done the best they could at the time with this area. So, yes, it's, the lots, a little undersized, it is undersized, and the frontage is undersized, but I also do think that it is not, it's not a gross, it's not grossly undersized, and I guess that's all kind of in personal perspective, right? So that's just kind of how I see it. And again, I think that, you know, as Mr. Shaw states, that that house is where it is, and we're not moving that house. And I thought the same thing, whether or not there could have been some maneuvering of the lot line in the front at an angle maybe, or something that could have achieved something, but then are we looking at another, you know, just another variance in another form to achieve some frontage? But again, I do think that, you know, I don't think it's, it's really, really out of character. I mean, I understand, I do understand the lots are big on the street, but then I also am looking at what the zoning is in that area. So it just so happens that this neighborhood was built, you know, with more, you know, a lot of lots have more square footage than they actually, you know, than actually what the zoning requires. And I guess with that, with the layout of the lot, where it is, I think that putting a, as we say in our home, within the, you know, within the setbacks, and all the setbacks will be met, I think that it wouldn't be something that would stick out like a sore thumb, like, wow, that's a really tiny lot with a big house on it. So, I'm pretty much in favor of the application. I think I have enough feel that I would support this. Mr. Curry.
Well, overall, I, I'm in support of the application. A couple of thoughts. I agree with Mr. Lionel. When you look at the different lot sizes and frontages in the immediate area on Hills Ferry, this is small. You know, the others, you know, are meeting it, the frontage and the square footage, or exceeding it, and this is the only one in this portion of Hills Ferry that doesn't. However, and the attorney Westgate mentioned this a couple times, and when I first saw, uh-oh, subdivision, proposed subdivision in the north end, you know, those are usually a very contentious thing, and I think a lot of times, as Mr. Attorney Westgate said, it's, you know, it's somebody maybe putting a new home in an old neighborhood, but this, I did, do find it to be a mix of some old, there's some new. I had never been on, and I hope I'm saying it right, Adelaide Avenue, but that looks all new. It's a completely different character, and of course, Smithfield Terrace is new. And I was looking at the general neighborhood as a mixture of new and small homes. So I was having some heartburn with proposed Lot A, you know, having a little bit less in frontage and square footage, but you know, when I site walked the area, it doesn't look, it doesn't look out of place, small. To be, I don't think you'd be driving by saying, "Yeah, that's an undersized lot there." It's, so, you know, that, and of course, really the four feet of the house, if that were moved just a little bit, we could have two conforming lots. As Mr. Shaw mentioned, that persuades me to find, you know, to be in support of this application.
I'm actually in support of the application. I know the street well. It's down a ways from my neighborhood, and it's an area I've actually walked. And so, when I look at it and I see that the lot width, 75 feet required, got 67, I think, okay, is somebody gonna say, "Whoops, that's eight feet different" when they're driving by? Or the area for the, with a 300-foot difference, I don't think it's all that noticeable. I don't think somebody is gonna stop and notice or comment on the fact that there's a slight deviation from what's required. So for me, and looking at it and saying, okay, if I was a parent and I had the option to do this, and I could do this, I would do this. And because it's such a minimal impact, and because you have old and new, and you have smaller and larger, you know, I can't disagree with this. I actually support this.
Any other discussion? Looking to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of owner Jeffrey Smith. The address is 75 Hills Ferry Road. Jeffrey E. Smith, trustee of the Jeffrey E. Smith Revocable Trust, owner, 75 Hills Ferry Road, has requested the following variances from Land Use Code 190-16, Table 16-3. Firstly, for minimum lot area, 7,500 square feet required, 6,758 square feet proposed. And secondly, for minimum lot width, 75 feet required, 67.16 feet proposed. Both requests are part of subdividing one lot into two lots, and this is in the IRA zone. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. I think the most significant special condition of the property is that while it has sufficient area to meet two lots' worth of minimum area requirement, and actually sufficient front width as well, the placement of the home that's apparently was built in 1890 is such that it will not allow for any reasonable way of dividing the property up into two lots to meet the dimensional requirements. So, the only feasible means present for the applicant to pursue is an area variance. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There's been no testimony one way or the other regarding adversely affecting property values of surrounding parcels, but I don't, I believe the Board does not feel that this will have negative impact. It's not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served. And with that, I, again, motion is to grant these two area variances.
Ms. McKay, second. She got you. Ms. McKay, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's four.
That's four. Those in opposition? That's one. Mr. Lionel? Support of one. Motion passes. Again, be aware of the thirty-day window of appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your time.
With that, I'll close case number two. You know, Mr. Attorney Westgate, just a minute to clear the board.
We rarely have the board views, and that's two cases. It would never have been a better thing. We don't have to have.
Okay, I'd like to open case number three. This is for KNA Properties LLC. It's five to seven Barrett Street. Description is KNA Properties LLC owner, five to seven Barrett Street, sheet one hundred, lot thirty-one, requesting variance from land use code section one ninety-sixteen, table sixteen-three, for a minimum lot area of five thousand fifty square feet existing, ten thousand four hundred fifty-four square feet required to convert an existing two-family dwelling into a three-family dwelling. It's in the RC zoning district. Welcome. Give us your name and address, please.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Core Carlson, and together with my wife Anne, we live at forty-eight Weathersfield Road in Nashua, and we are the owners of KNA Properties LLC, which in turn owns five-seven Barrett Street, which is what this variance is all about. Presently, five-seven Barrett Street is a two-family house. It consists of downstairs, number seven, it's a three-bedroom unit, and upstairs, second and third floor, it's a five-bedroom unit. So, what we're proposing is taking the second and third floor and changing it from a five, one single five-bedroom unit, and making a three-bedroom unit on the second floor and a one-bedroom unit on the third floor. So, we're actually reducing the number of bedrooms in this unit altogether. So, to do so, we have to add a kitchen in the, on the third floor, so, but it's already got a bathroom and all that, so it's a relatively minor construction project. We'll need, you know, plumbing and electrical permits and so on to do this. So, there's no outside work being done, so there's no negative effect on neighborhood or whatever when it comes to the outside. We've just been fixing up the place, making it look a little bit better. So, the neighborhood is one of mostly multifamily houses. Right next to us, we do have a single-family house, and on the other side, we have a two-family house with eight bedrooms. Joining us on the backside, there's actually a four-unit house with ten bedrooms with about the same footprint as we have on our properties. So, I think the, what we're trying to do, previously, previous owner, the five-bedroom unit has been rented to five different individuals. So, basically, there were five cars in the driveway just for that one number-five unit, and then two cars for the number-seven unit downstairs. So, what we're proposing now, we're seeing a maximum of six cars in the driveway, and most likely five cars with the single, you know, with the one-bedroom unit upstairs. So, we think the, it's a positive for us, it's a positive for the neighborhood. The density issue is what the variance is all about, the small lot with the number of people there, but it's really fits in with what others are doing in that neighborhood, so it's not something that's really changing the neighborhood, anything whatsoever. So, yeah, so really, what we're limited to now, with a five-bedroom unit, we either have to rent it to five individuals or to a very large family. So, I think the concern, when we went to town hall to get the building permit, we found out that we had a density issue, and I think what we're proposing really shows that we're not adding anything to the density of this lot. And I do have some pictures of just a driveway with cars in it, if somebody did want to see what the, you know, what the room was there for cars.
So, would anybody like to see? Yes, we'd like to see the pictures. So, can you just state through us, how many cars can the driveway, how many cars can you park in that driveway?
We figure six cars can easily park in the driveway.
So, you can hand it to Mr. Lionel, and he'll pass it around. Thank you, sir.
And as you notice on the picture, you'll see there's a two-car garage at the end of the driveway, so two cars can actually go in there. So, we're looking at four cars on the outside, next to the house or behind the garage.
So, with that third unit, the third unit, you know that you'll, I don't know if it exists, but you know that will require, that unit will require two forms of, you know, egress, right?
Yes, it already has. It's got a front entrance stairway and a back entrance stairway to both of those floors.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Curry?
Yeah, just how long have you owned the property now?
We bought that in, I believe it was August of two thousand and fourteen.
Okay. And then, how often would you say, like, how many evenings is the garage occupied with vehicles?
The garage previously hasn't been occupied by vehicles. It had a double-opening door, and they used it for storage. So, part of our fixing up, the house on the outside and so on, those doors were so dilapidated, we tore them out and we put regular garage doors in. So, now the cars can get into the garage.
Okay, 'cause I was a little unsure about the rightmost bay, because it looks like there's a staircase or something, and I didn't want to walk on private property, we just looked from the street. It was unclear to me whether a vehicle could access that rightmost, you know, on a, basically a daily basis.
Yeah, what, previously, some of the people living upstairs, they're a bunch of guys, they had trucks, and in that case, they would not have been able to fit next to each other. But I took a picture with my grandson's mid-sized car in the driveway, and measured it out, and definitely there's room for that car to go by and get into that garage bay as well. And I think the picture shows that fairly clear, it shows the stairway that you mentioned, and the fact that the room left there is more than the width of the car itself.
I see what he's talking about.
The other question I have is, is there parking on the street in the daytime? I don't, and I didn't know what side of the street, because when I visited it, you know, there were seemingly cars on both sides, maybe they were just temporary, it was a little unclear what the parking situation was there.
It must have been temporary if there were cars, because the side that the house is on, there's no parking. It's the opposite side from the house that's parking is allowed.
Okay. I guess that's the only question I have for the moment. Thanks.
Mr. Shaw.
I'm pretty sure that you basically said all this in your testimony, but I just wanted to kind of ask it specifically. So, essentially, your plans are only to do interior conversion, there's no exterior additions or additions to the actual square footage of the property itself, so it's really just converting interior spaces.
Yes, absolutely. The outside has just been a matter of bringing up the aesthetics of the property and no change to any footprints.
Okay, thank you.
And again, just for the record, there'll be how many less bedrooms now?
One less bedroom.
One less bedroom?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, a total of seven instead of eight, yeah.
Instead of eight, okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition? Come on up, sir, and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Gil Terrier. I live at twenty-two and a half Lake Street. I truly understand the desire to go from the two to three units, because the second-story unit is huge. The concerns that I have are with the parking. If, like, if you look at the pictures, if you look at, it would be the south side of the driveway, there's a wall there, and if you do, in fact, park cars in front of the left garage, I don't think there's enough room between the vehicle that would be parked there to get past the steps that are on the right to get into that second garage. And that's basically it. Then, you know, so, yes, you could probably, you could squeeze in probably six cars on the outside and one down at the bottom. And that's, like I said, the only, the only concern I have is the parking. Thank you.
Sir, so, just to follow up that, have you had any issues with any parking around your property or caused by this property?
No.
No? Okay. All right, so basically, your concern is just the on-site parking?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
The only concern I've had with, no reflection on KNA, but one of the tenants a couple of years ago decided that he was going to plow the snow, and he was plowing in front of my house, and that didn't settle too well.
I don't blame you.
I just had one other question.
Mr. Curry has a question.
Is this part of the city where people can pay for parking and park at night?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so...
We don't have, well, are you saying people do park at the Young Street parking lot? But that's not really a good thing, because I think they have to be out by seven in the morning or something like that.
So, this is not one of the streets that were given on street parking, overnight parking abilities?
There is no.
Not here. It's closer, Lake Street closer to downtown. I think they did that off some of the tree streets.
Okay. I know it was somewhere, but I wasn't sure.
I don't think they went up this far.
Closer into the downtown.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I know certain sections of it, it was only a temporary thing.
Right.
So, no, there's no...
It was a pilot program in this area, I don't know if it was that street, but it was, but I know it didn't go through.
Yeah, it keeps changing from day to day.
All right.
So, again, you said there hasn't been issues of parking or people parking overnight on this street?
Oh, people parking the street overnight, yes, and they get ticketed every now and again.
Okay.
But, you know, it's not, is it common practice? I would say it's not common, you know, people do forget, you know, and it's like, the way the parking enforcement is now, it's, I suppose, once you figure out what the parking enforcement cycle is, you're all set.
Remember, you heard it here first.
Thank you, sir.
Actually, can I just ask, Mr. Falk, is it one and a half parking spaces per unit? Is that the requirement by code?
Yes, one and a half per unit.
So, it's four and a half is the requirement for this?
So, we'd have to round it up to five.
Right, so, yeah, okay.
Anybody else like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Okay, seeing none. Sir, you have five minutes to come back if you'd like to rebuttal to what was just said by the opposition?
You don't have to.
You don't have to. Okay, so you'll rest? Okay. And, sir, again, our processes that you have, you could come back and speak if you like, or you could rest? Okay. Seeing that, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. I was really trying to understand what was going on there, and I think part of what gives me a little comfort is that, do we know exterior changes? I think it's clear to me, the application, I was just trying to figure out what's going on. I think in this case, really, you know, the fact that, you know, we're going up one unit, but we're taking away a bedroom. I think the parking is what it is there, and I think that it looks like it's being all managed on-site, and as much as you probably, or I wouldn't want to deal with the, you know, the merry-go-round of moving cars, but if it works for them, and like anything else, we can all choose to park on the street in Nashua, and we just risk getting a ticket. But I don't think there was any comment made about, there is some on-street parking happens, but I don't think that it was all directed towards this piece of property. So, that could be anybody on that street doing that. So, and yes, with the square footage that's required, we're in an existing, older neighborhood. A lot of these lots are all undersized. So, with that, again, the abutter didn't tell us, he had a problem with the one tenant, because of what he did with the plow, but I don't think, there was no really comments about any big problems coming from that piece of property. So, you know, with that, I think that, you know, I would find support for this application. Mr. Shaw.
And I think the fact that they're, you know, the applicant, you know, states that there should be parking sufficient for six, and even if there is some concern about the whole thing with the second garage and getting in and out or whatever, it still should meet at least the five very minimum requirements. I think parking is reasonably, gonna be reasonably managed, and, you know, I can relate to the car jockeying things, and it's not fun, but you just deal with it with a property like this as needed, and maybe most of the time, they can kind of work around each other. But I think the thing that's most compelling to me is, you know, I don't like seeing, like, you know, such an over-intense usage, but this is a well-established, you know, neighborhood, and the structure is not changing physically from the exterior, and to me, that's a huge part of what makes this reasonable. And then, knowing furthermore that actually, there's one less bedroom, and there's potentially less actual total vehicles, and less people using this property in this proposed configuration, I find it a reasonable request.
Ms. Lionel.
I'm in favor of this request. I believe that the new usage will be less intensive than the old usage, especially with the one unit having had five bedrooms rented out individually. So, there's one fewer bedroom, certainly potential for one fewer car, and I don't have a problem with this.
Okay. Mr. Curry.
Yeah, I was very concerned with this at first because of the overage. I've been by Barrett Street a bazillion times and never been on it till I site-walked this property, and I was struggling with the site walk, because the street was very tight, and there seemed to be some kind of bunch of illegal driveways that go into the street a little bit, and cars were all over, it was hard to even turn around. But, on the other hand, what is positive about this application is the fact that a bedroom would be eliminated, and this applicant's owned it since two thousand and fourteen. I was almost afraid of hearing that there was parking issues at this site, but we, we're not hearing that there's been parking issues at this site. And I think it's a bit of a wash. I mean, I do think adding the unit certainly brings on another parking spot, but the bedroom, with that being removed, and the fact that there hasn't been parking issues brought to our attention for the last couple, several years at this site, I find support for it. Again, with that bedroom being removed, you know, as a bit of mitigation, you might say, for the extra unit, I find support for it.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
I concur with everything that's been said. I'm in support.
All right, thank you. Anybody want to make a motion, or would you like me to make a motion?
Go for it.
I'd like to make a motion for KNA Properties LLC. The address is five-seven Barrett Street. The description is KNA Properties LLC owner, five-seven Barrett Street, sheet one hundred, lot thirty-one, requesting a variance from land use code section one ninety-sixteen, table sixteen-three, for a minimum lot area of five thousand fifty square feet, existing ten thousand four hundred fifty-four square feet required to convert an existing two-family dwelling into a three-family dwelling. It's in the RC zoning district. We find that the variance is needed to enable applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. We spoke that this is a well-established neighborhood, that the current owner has owned it since two thousand and fourteen with no incidences of issues with parking or whatsoever. It is noted that there is going to be no exterior changes. One of the biggest benefits is that's going to be one less bedroom in the change from a two-family to a three-unit building, and again, that's equals to a slightly less intensive use. The benefits sought by the applicant, we believe cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values or surrounding parcels. We have no testimony for or against that. We find that it is not contrary to public interests, and that substantial justice would be served. With that, I make a motion...
With that, I make a motion to approve the variance. Seconded by Mr. Lionel. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, sir. Your application's been approved. Just be aware, there's a thirty-day window of appeal, but you can, okay? Thank you. With that, I'll close case number three and open case number four. Folks, if you don't mind, we're going to just continue what I'm meaning. Thank you. I'd open case number four for the owner of 145 Ridge Road Realty Trust. Our applicant is Ricky Maynard. Address is 145 Ridge Road. Description is 145 Ridge Road Realty Trust Owner, Ricky Maynard, applicant 145 Ridge Road, Sheet B Lot 1949, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-264 for accessory use area, forty percent permitted, one hundred and sixty-six percent existing, one hundred and eighty-nine percent proposed, in order to construct a 26-by-15-foot attached storage shed to an existing garage. It's in the R18 zoning district. Welcome.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Good evening, gentlemen. I've been here a few times.
Just your name and address, please.
Mike Maynard, 145 Ridge Road.
Thank you.
Nashua, New Hampshire. Times change, things happen. I have a ninety-year-old father who just moved in. I have a young lady I'm engaged to who moved in. The garage isn't big enough for all my stuff, her car and his car. So I don't have a storage shed on the property. I was thinking of getting something from Reed's Ferry and having it put on. But even if I did that, I'd still have to get a variance, because it's a building. So I was speaking to my go-to person, Tom, and we were looking at the garage that I got a variance for three years ago, two years ago, for my antique cars. He says, instead of trying to get a separate shed, and it's going to be an eyesore, let's come up with a plan, attach it to this garage here. Can't be seen from the street. I don't have any neighbors in that area, because I got a three-acre lot, and it's all wooden trees. So I'm hoping to get a storage area, so I can put my ladders, my lawnmower, stove thrower, patio furniture, whatnot, so, you know, everybody has a storage shed. And I can't use my antique car garage, because it's full. And I do have a business building on the property, as you well know, and there isn't any room in there. So I'm hoping that justice will be served, and I get to have a storage shed, like most of the American men in the world. Because let's face it, if her car sits outside, I'm sleeping outside. So, you know, I do need somewhere to put all the stuff. So it would match, same siding, same roofing, as the existing garage that it's being attached to. It would have a found, a monolithic cement foundation with sonar tubes. And it would essentially be a post and beam on top of the sonar tubes. And then we'd create a wall, frame it in, and vinyl siding. Talked to all the neighbors. No one had a complaint. And again, I'm here for another variance. That three-acre lot is really killing me. I, I just can't, I wanted to build a barn years ago. My grandfather owned the property back in the twenties and thirties. I just, you know, here I am, at the mercy of you people.
Mr. Curry?
Well, one of the things, you know, boards have to find in the state of New Hampshire are special conditions. And so you've given us a lot of history. I appreciate that. But just, I'd just like to kind of encapsulate what I think is a special condition. You've got this very big lot, and for that, I think it's the biggest one around, three acres. And given the size of your house, then, which is not anything extravagant, I'm not sure what the square footage is.
Fifty-six by forty. I built the home in 1984 myself.
But there you go. It's not an unusually large house. When you have some structures like this, you end up with, you know, a rather whopping one hundred and sixty-six percent and requesting one hundred and eighty-nine percent. However, as you said, you don't, you won't even see it from the street, what you're proposing, and the neighbors won't even see it. And that's also, I think, a very special condition of the property. It's not really a question. It's just a statement of how I see and thought. Maybe putting your testimony more in terms of the law, we, the criteria we need to see.
I think I have 600 feet of frontage, and the lot goes back about 620 feet. I've tried to keep everything in a rectangle, so it's compact, and it's not spread out. So the wooded area is approximately, probably an acre and a quarter of all trees. And the rest of my usable lot is the rest of the property. So there's a lot of grass. You can't see the garage from the street. I don't think it'll bother anyone. My two next-door neighbors, I've asked, and they don't have a problem. But people in the back are so far away, they can't see the forest through the trees. It's that thick. So as far as sight goes, it won't be an eyesore. And it'll be built right. You know, it's not a crappy shed that after fifteen years starts to fall apart, like the poticle board sheds they sell at Home Depot. It'll be something that, you know, will be there for a long time.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Maynard? We're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak in? Nope?
I'm good.
Okay. So just note that there is nobody really left in the audience to speak in opposition or with favor of this application. So I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Curry?
In short, I find support for the application. I mean, when we got the request, I thought, holy cow, you know, this is so much. But then I'm like, oh, I go by this place all the time. And like I say, the special conditions of this, given the size of the house and what's out there, you know, one hundred and eighty-nine is probably the high watermark that I've ever seen for, you know, accessory use. But on the other hand, it doesn't look out of place, because the property is so big. And what the proposal is, I think, speaks for itself. It's on the back. You're not going to see it. It's, you know, you wouldn't think that one hundred and eighty-nine percent is unnoticedable, but I think it's pretty unnoticedable. So I'm, I'm okay with it as it's proposed.
I'm also in favor of the application. I mean, again, the sheer size of the property. And I think that the only other way you get around this is he'd have to quadruple the size of his house, and then he'd be all set. And it still would work, but that would be more expensive that way. But, yeah, so I find support. And again, I think, even if I were to see that a little bit from the street, again, I would still probably in support, you know, because I think that he's, the property looks good. I think he maintains it well with everything that's there, and so, but with it the way it is, I'm in full support of the application. Mr. Lionel?
I'm in support of the application. I just want to call attention to inconsistency on the applicant and property owner name with what we've got in this sheet here. Just to make sure that when the motion is made, the correct owner name is recorded.
I think it's just the applicant name should say Ricky Michaud?
Yeah, Ricky Michaud.
It should, it is Ricky Michaud.
Michaud.
I don't know what happened. He filled it out, so.
So, and I had the same-
He gave you his last name, yes.
Yeah, we, you guys didn't mention my last name, but it is Ricky Michaud.
So, I did ask Mr. Falk today about that, because, yeah, so, but I know there was something different there. Okay. I was just reading off the, our sheet.
Our list, yeah.
Yeah. We'll make that note, make sure it's Mr. Michaud when we make the motion.
And just, just for clarification, the variance application, the property owner's name is listed as Michael Maynard, but on the sheet we have here, it's 145 Ridge Road Realty Trust as the owner.
Realty trust. The property is in a trust.
Okay, it's actually owned by the trust. Okay.
That's right, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lionel. We appreciate that. I want to get it right. Any other discussion? Mr. Shaw?
I'm in support of this, and I was part of, you were too, I know, from three, almost four years ago, or three and a half years ago. I feel the same way. I mean, that the, it's just the nature of the large property, significant amount of accessory structures that aren't attached, and so we end up in this thing. But with such a large lot, it's, it makes sense when you're talking about a lot, where you're talking about, you know, so many thousands of square feet. When you start talking about acres, it's just, this kind of rule falls apart, so.
I'm in support of the application. The only thing I think I would like to clarify is that I'm not a gentleman.
A gentlewoman.
I apologize.
I just thought, since we were clarifying things.
But you can appreciate the antique cars.
I absolutely appreciate the antique cars.
Mr. Curry, yes?
I'll make a motion on behalf, see if I get this right. The owner is 145 Ridge Road Realty Trust. The applicant is Ricky Michaud, M.I.C.H.A.U.D. And the address is 145 Ridge Road. And again, the request is a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-264. That's for accessory use area. Forty percent is permitted, one hundred and sixty-six percent is existing. And the application tonight requests one hundred and eighty-nine percent. And that's to construct a 26-by-15-foot attached storage shed to the existing garage. I think the board finds a variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. And again, as we discussed, the special conditions of the property, it's a very large lot with a moderately sized house on it. And given the house and the fact that there's this, a couple of large outbuildings already there, that's where the one hundred and sixty-six percent existing is. I think the board finds that this proposal to add 26 by 15 feet addition to that is a reasonable use of the property, given the size of it and where it's located on the back of the existing garage. I think the board finds that this proposal for the attached storage shed is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. I think the board finds it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. And it's not contrary to the public interest, and substantial justice is served to the landowner to allow him to add this proposed storage shed. So I make a motion to approve.
Seconded by Ms. McKay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? It's five to nothing. Congratulations. Motion passes. Just be aware, there's a thirty-day window of appeal, highly unlikely, but it's always there. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll close case number four. And that concludes our cases for the evening. We have some meeting minutes from November 13th. Did anybody see anything in those?
I didn't see any need for corrections on the minutes for November 13th.
Anybody else?
No, I did not. I did not.
All right, so I'll make a motion to accept the November 13th meeting minutes. Seconded by Mr. Curry. All in favor? It's five to nothing. Then we have our agenda for the December 1st meeting, three cases. I don't see any regional impact, but maybe I'm missing something.
I don't see any. I don't see any.
I don't see any.
Okay, so we see no regional impact. See any other business, the board? No? Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Curry?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:15 p.m.
Motion adjourned at 8:15 p.m.? All those in favor? It's five to nothing. We're adjourned. Thank you.
The next meeting, December 11th. I didn't know right now, except I think there's three cases.
Three cases.
Is the agenda not set? Is more of them on?
No, this is it now. It was only going to be these three. So, what do you think about the? I don't think we have any in right now, but I think we're going to get one in for Long Avenue. Remember that one?
We just heard.
Back of the gas station off Broad Street? Yeah, that one, I think we will be getting a rehearing request. The guy already came in and was asking about it. But these three cases, one may be a little long, but a lot-